All right, it is just a little bit after seven. We'll call this meeting to order. Looks like everybody except for Joe is here and we'll do the flag salute. Please stand if you're able.
Ready, yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, welcome this morning to our guests and to the board members and to our student board representative. Item two is district guidelines for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? All right, excellent. We'll move on to number three, which is an overnight travel request for the DECA state competition in Bellevue. This is something that our DECA club has done for several years at least for the state competition for, I think there's... Are you in this Charlie? Are you part of this? How many people are going to this? Do you know? Right, yeah. Big number of kids. Great experience to get to learn a little bit. It's about pitching proposals and thinking on their feet. Are there any questions? I move that we approve the overnight travel request. Is there a second? Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of the overnight travel requests signify with an "I". "I", opposed? And abstentions? Great, we'll move on now to the study session, which is a pretty interesting one this morning. This is on long and short range planning support facilities. We have some guests with us here today and I'll let Mr. McKay take it from there.
All right, good morning everyone and thank you. So what you have in front of you, you have a hard copy in front of you as well. You can follow along there. Obviously that's yours. We posted it to the site as well and then we'll give you a presentation. Chris is not here. She is enjoying the weather in Arizona for a few days of vacation, but I'd be remiss to not say that she had a lot to do with some of the information you're going to see today. Steph is here. Frank is obviously here. Jeff and Colton are here. They've been actively involved in a lot of this, but they've not seen some of the detail that we're going to see this morning. This is a lot of work that has really gone on since the facilities committee team last year provided us the priority of the facility improvement needs of the district. So after that, we did some work and that's where I'll take you through some of the individual ideas here. I also want to make sure that you know this is completely draft. There's been no decisions made in regards to any of this. This is just a result of the work that we have been doing and getting it in front of you as the board to determine what we do next. So I want to make sure that you also see that the title of the session is long and short range. There are both included here. So this is not just things that we think need to be done in in the long future, but really things that could be done in a much shorter timeframe as well. Jennifer, go ahead. The purpose today again is to provide you with an update on the recent work associated with long and short term, short range facility improvement planning and determine if you, the board, has an interest in moving forward with further work in these areas. So it's, we're not asking for any action on any of this. It's really just to determine, do we want to continue to explore what is going to be presented to you. Go ahead Jennifer. I talked a little bit about the background and what brought us here, but there was a committee forum made up of parents, community members and staff that came together with, with really their responsibility was to identify and prioritize improvement needs across the entire district. And they did that through multiple meetings over the course of that time and then some tours as well, a survey put together by our, and put out to our community. We took all of that information and the committee's final responsibility was to identify and prioritize what you will see on the next slide. So here are the priorities. These have been presented to you in another form as part of the work that was done. There's no real change to them. It's still the same seven and still the same rank order of priority that that committee decided to present. Why there are four in gold, those are the four that we're going to talk most about, but those are the four also that were at what was termed to be phase one. Those were ones that obviously the priority rank is higher, but they also were termed to be ones that should be addressed in a, if it was to be a phase approach quicker than the ones on five, six and seven. So what you're going to see today is one, two and four. Number three, alleviate traffic congestion. The committee itself felt that that was really a worthy one to put, but we also as a committee realized that we didn't ultimately control that. We had to have partners involved with that, namely our city and potentially county and/or state would have to have some involvement in that in order to reduce congestion there. But I think it had such strong support, not only from the committee, but when we got some results back from our community, they showed a need to make sure that that was a priority in the district. But we don't have a plan for you to present to you for that one as of right now. I will tell you that there is discussion ongoing between the city and the school district with a lot of brainstorming and ideas that could be proposed. I mean, you hear everything from a traffic light to a new rerouting of traffic to a roundabout. So just so you know, there is thought and discussion going on. Go ahead Jennifer. All right, so the first part of this is really to address number one on that. And this is the high school renovation and modernization. And what I want to share with you is that remember when we started the process, it was really open to all kinds of different ideas. One of the ideas that, that didn't get any traction from the committee, other than some thoughts, was to look at the high school in a way of building a new high school. That came out, but it did not get any support. The idea that the committee and our community and staff really thought that the high school in its current location was probably the best interest to look at that as a renovation and modernization project and not to go out and look for property and build anew. So from that decision by that committee, it really led us to what we're going to show you today. So we're not, we're not presenting anything that has the high school in a different location. So I've broken these down into two, two topics. Work update to give you an update of what's been going on behind the scenes and then a recommendation. So our work update, the district's architectural consultant, NAC, who's been the architect for multiple projects. You know them, you know Brent, you've, those who have been on the board, you know that he's been involved with the district for a number of projects, is nearing the completion of the study and survey document. In addition to the study and survey, the consultant is also preparing a master plan for the high school and its future. So we tasked them as part of the study and survey to continue their work on what a master plan could look like. And they have come up with some really good ideas that I think you'll be impressed with of what they have provided for us. The recommendation that I would have for you is that you use the master plan as a resource for future decision-making in regards to the renovation and modernization of the high school. Is that you use it as a guide. Now that does not mean by any way, shape or form that the board at that time or the superintendent at that time or facilities director at that time or the administration of the school at that time, it may be completely different. And the needs of our students may not, may be completely different. But this should be a guide based on the work that we're doing right now in order to think about the future. Go ahead Jennifer. So the first thing is the site plan and I want to call your attention to some areas that that our architect really thought were important. And I'm going to actually go point them out. Because they spent a lot of time on what some things that are, could be considered to be very basic. But it really, it really brought the project idea together when they started to think about these arrows. Okay? So there is a line right here that goes west to east that in a way connects the campus together. And so this west to east arrow leads to a main entry, which leans down the main hallway, which leads eventually to the parking lot. Now, if you drive in this road here, our main entry area, that does not, what does it lead to? It leads right to where we have the, the dock and the dumpsters, right? That's the point of entry. So their idea was to have a point of entry that actually enters to the main point of entry of the school. And by doing that, you have this arrow going east-west that connects the main entry through the main corridor of the school, through the gymnasium area. And then as you will see, you probably have noticed that they have put a location for a performing arts center out here, which then leads out to the other parking lot. So that's, this is a concept idea that they felt should be kind of the center point of how they would look to modernize and renovate the school. The other arrow is the arrow that connects the other way, which would connect through here, through here, which is the main hallway going this direction and then connect out into what would be again, new construction with CTE course classrooms and so forth, which would then continue to an outdoor space, which would be closer to outdoor athletic fields. So all of these arrows kind of promote an idea of not only movement of students, but sightlines for the campus as well. Any questions on that? Okay, Jennifer, go ahead. And you can see again, this is the main level of concept idea as well. You see the arrow idea here. You see the arrow idea here. So think about the main level when you walk into the main entryway. And they have identified some areas that they think, and you can tell by a key, this is not by any means, we wanted, we wanted to give enough idea of where some big location things would be. But again, this is, this is again, so draft in an early rendition. It's, it could be up for change specifically. Some important areas that we know that are problematic for us currently, obviously are commons, student center expands greatly, significant, almost doubles the size or maybe even more. A movement of the kitchen and expansion, but still have central reception, administration, counseling, all those things that you would want in the core of your school at the main entry point. It moves out of this main entry area with this expansion here. Then it moves over the things that we currently see with the dock and delivery farther over this way. Okay, that's the main level. Go ahead Jennifer. This is the upper level. Kind of the same concept with the arrows. They do align. One of the challenges with the high school is a lack of daylight coming in, especially when you get to the basement, but the whole building doesn't really provide sunlight coming in. And so there's some ideas to get light into this area and that is really to open it up. So you open up the building itself. You open up the roof to bring light in. And then each of these areas down here, thinking about the upper level, these would be open areas as well where sunlight would come in. This area specifically would be open. And so you would see from the very top level of the school, that would be open and go all the way down into the main floor. So you'd see openness there. Staircases and so forth would be more open with a lot more light coming in to the school. All right, and then our bottom level or lower level. Similar as well here though, but now you can really see how this level connects over here to a new classroom level as well. But same type of ideas, you also see these too. These areas right here are to get more daylight into the school. You also see the performing arts area a little bit more. We had never ever considered the use of that hillside as appropriate land to be able to, to think about building on that. The architects thought very differently and then they started to show us some examples, specifically Pullman. Pullman High School has very similar topography to our high school. And they showed how they were able to build into areas like that and to use those areas that were at one time nonusable. So this performing arts center, this would be on this side would be the audit auditorium part, large auditorium. And this would be more of band choir and storage area here. All connected. So this is not a separate building. It is all connected to one area. Okay? The use of stairs, elevators and so forth. Any questions on this? So this is a concept. It's an architectural concept by the architect and a couple of designers that work at NAC. And they just basically took the current floor plan of the high school and just thought this is what we think we can do with a renovation and modernization project. So it doesn't get into detail, but I think it gives you some concept of ideas and some possibilities that could be done. Frank, anything to add to this? Can you talk about maybe the idea of mechanical and all that, what they talked about?
Radical changes to mechanical systems that exist in high school modernization and everything else. And this type of design lends us to do it at that time. In other words, you're, most of you are aware, I think all of you are aware of the Clean Building Standards Act, that we need to start navigating towards meeting. And this takes a lot of that into consideration for future. But when I looked at these concepts to begin with, I have to be perfectly honest with you. I went, wow, I didn't even think of that. But then when I started to look at the arrows and how it all tied together, I was really impressed with the concept that we could do this type of renovation on this site. And I think that the road that the district's heading in the future, this leaves a good framework for all of that, including the mechanic.
Can you talk about the structural? Remember they shared with us that the building itself structurally is very, it's very good. It's in very good shape and that this design would allow us not to get into just, to taking away that structural integrity?
Right. With the, with regard to the structure, it lends itself to be enhanced and not necessarily needs to be improved. In other words, it's, it's structurally sound and stable and would accommodate the vertical growth that they're proposing and also the growth out on both sides. If that makes sense.
Yep. There are massive columns within the building itself for structural purposes. There was, I thought at one time by the architect and engineers that those would have to be relocated, which is significant. It, it could destroy any, any concept idea. But the way they, they have looked at this is those columns stay intact. And so we don't have to go in there and change those. Stuff that you would never see. All covered up, all designed for the structural integrity of the building, but those would stay in place. We would not have to adjust those, which is significant. All right. So you know that this really looks cool and looks good, but there are some challenges as you're going to see next. Yeah. And the next one's the budget. And these are big numbers. So, so what I had the architect do is to give us the cost analysis of what he thinks it's going to cost. Okay? And then knowing full well that we're not going to be in any time building it soon, I had him forecast out with some escalation figures. So it could at least get an idea of what it looks like. All right. And he has done that for us. So I think it's important to know, all this other stuff, you know, you can go through that yourself, but the things that I look at, all right. If we look at 2025, this is a hundred and ninety million dollar project. Right? This figure right here, where is it at? Where's our local? Where's our state assistance at? Right here? This is the escalation. I don't know if you put that on there. We have, we have state assistance available, but not enough to cover the whole thing, obviously. This figure up here, this is the current debt capacity of the district. All right. So remember I've talked to you about this idea, like even if we wanted to, we couldn't. Even if our community approved, we couldn't because of this figure right there. We can't go out and tax our community because we have debt capacity limits. And that's the amount, that's the amount of capacity we have to tap it completely out. I don't think that would be worthy because the tax rates in our community would be so high with tapping that to that amount even so. So this is a pretty aggressive escalation. When architects do this work, they always want to be higher. They don't tend to want to be lower. And so they're going to put some pretty significant figures here. But if our, you'll see on our timeframe, if we think this is between 2033 and 2036, which I estimate based on some things I'll share with you in a little bit, you know, we're looking at, you know, two hundred and eighty million dollar project. All right? Makes sense to you guys? Jennifer? All right, so timelines. So based on the analysis of debt capacity, bond payment schedules, which remember we're still paying on bonds, current tax rates, anticipated voter support, enrollment projections, which plays into this significantly. Enrollment at the high school now and in the coming years is going to be large, but then that group of students that's in the younger grades is going to start coming through. So enrollment projections are extremely important because we're not probably, if we were to go out between twenty-three and thirty, thirty-three and thirty-six, our enrollment is not going to provide us additional state resources. It's just going to be because of the condition of the building and the age of the building is where we're going to get our state assistance. So based on all that, the timeframe for this project, in my opinion, okay, and Chris's, is somewhere between 2033 and 2036. Bonds start to drop off at, during those time periods. But I want to make this clear. This is pending board and voter approval. So those all have to line up. The timeframe, the funding, the board's approval at that time. And then obviously the voters have to approve, which is potentially, as you saw, a pretty big amount of money. The only way, in my opinion, based on all of this, is you've got, you've got to figure out a way to get the current bond payments taken care of to a point where you can replace them with a new set of bond payments. But a lot of other things have to happen that are outside of really our control with regards to the economy, construction costs and a lot of those things. This timeframe estimate may change, as it probably will, based on bond refinancing opportunities. All right? You can remember the district had an opportunity to refinance bonds a few years ago and it was significant savings. And those opportunities could happen. We just don't know. Changes to the sixty percent super majority needed to pass a capital bond issue. There are two bills in the legislature currently. Those two bills, one is to take a, to the voters to reduce it from sixty percent to fifty percent. That's one bill that's being considered. The other bill being considered is to take it to sixty percent to fifty-five percent. Now, don't get your hopes up. These have been introduced in multiple, multiple sessions and they've never gotten the traction or even taken to the voters to get the voters' approval. So will that make a significant change? It may help in one of those other areas like support, voter support, but it's not truly going to help with the fiscal part of this as well. Enrollment projections, those could change. We have multiple developments going on. Are the people that are going to move into those developments have children? They could. If they all have children, then you, you would think that you're going to see some increased enrollment here. If that increased enrollment gets to the high school at the applicable time, you would, could potentially see your state assistance go up for enrollment overcrowding. Those are all figures that we don't know the answers to right now. Go ahead Jennifer.
Kevin, before we move on.
Before we go to the high school.
Any other questions or comments about high school? Charlie, do you have any questions or comments about high school renovation?
Just so I can get a reference, how much did like the middle school cost in John Campbell?
Ooh, good question.
Campbell I could tell you was about forty-three, forty-two. The middle school, I wasn't here when that was, when that was in construction, so I couldn't tell you.
I'll give.
Or smaller schools?
Yeah, I mean, obviously John Campbell's a lot smaller school. The middle school would be probably a better, but, but it would be smaller as well than what's being designed here.
I'm, I'm guessing when we were talking about the addition to square footage, I think you're looking at like a two hundred and thirty thousand square foot building when it's all said and done, the high school. Where the middle school's like ninety-three, I think, ninety-two.
And this is just going to be cheaper than raising the school and starting over?
What was that again?
This, this will be less expensive than just taking out the school and starting over? Cause I mean, that's a huge price tag.
It is. Yeah, um, you know, I don't, I don't know that. What we also have to think about here is that we still have to have school during this process. So there's got to be some type of a staging process that goes on or phasing process that goes on where kids continue to be educated or we got to figure out a different way to do it. Cause it's going to, any type of a school construction project is going to have, and now is going to be probably anywhere from eighteen months to two years?
Oh, yeah.
At least?
For something, for a new school that size, I think Pasco's, Pasco's building one right now about that size, a little bit more. It'll, it'll be the biggest high school in the state of Washington and they were an eighteen month window and that was really, really tight.
Yeah.
The other issue is available land for, if we were to start brand new and fresh.
Yeah.
We're kind of limited on land availability.
Things that I want you to remember before we go on to Wilbur Rep is that, remember that this is based on everything that we heard that people wanted in a high school. Okay? So when you think about the cost to this, a significant amount of the cost is associated with the extras that people wanted. So that I can imagine that fine arts facility, which was a want and a request and was heard loud and clear from, from people in our community, but that in itself is all new construction. That's all new square footage. That's a significant amount of money tied up specifically in that fine arts area. The other new construction is new classroom wing, which we had looked, thought about, you know, obviously for CTE and expanding out. That's all new construction as well and new square footage. That's going to be significant costs as well. If you're looking at just the current high school, the way that it sits, without that new construction and just a modernization and reconfigure of that, obviously your price tag's going to be a lot less than having those two new projects on there. I don't know exactly the cost. I can get that if you separated those two out and what that would be. But those were put on there because both of them through the process, there was great interest in providing fine arts with a location of their very own.
What about capacity? So I, I don't know the number like current capacity of the high school. I know we're busting at the seams. What's the capacity difference?
This would, this would bring our capacity, I think he said somewhere around thirteen fifty. Okay, and we're currently at what, eleven hundred? So it would build capacity in of another two hundred and some students. All right, that is future thinking. I, I'm not, I, it's important that we're looking at that and thinking about the future because that's part of the board's responsibilities. Part of my responsibility is to think about what's, what's going to happen to our school in the future. All right, but I, I don't want, I don't want you to get overwhelmed by that because that is just what the thought process is happening right now. It could be completely different when, when the time comes. Things could change so immensely that it's either a, a different option, a different idea, a different focus from our community. It could change dramatically. The other thing I wanted you to wear is that between now and 23 or 33, I'm having trouble saying 33, there will be another study and survey conducted by the, by our architectural firm or another architectural firm that will be closer to that 33 timeline where you'll get to do the whole process over again. And things maybe look very different at that time. But we can use what they did to maybe guide some decision-making when we get to that another study and survey. All right, that's long-term. Of the, of the presentation, that is the long-term. These are the short-term. So the short-term, I'm going to refer to it as the Wilbur Rep Tech Center. I, I think that the more that we can give in any type of discussions, planning, or actually if we were ever to get to construction, the more that we say this gentleman's name, probably the better. Because he's provided the funding to even be at a place where we can consider these things. So I want to honor him and his donation to our school district. And we, and if we're actually able to eventually build something, then we can honor him by putting his name on that facility signage and all those other things that go along with it. But we're very fortunate and thankful for the generous donation by Wilbur Rep. The district's consultant has been tasked to develop a draft plan to construct a career and technical education center, just as Wilbur Rep had asked. On the campus of the high school. Now, he didn't ask for it to be on the high school. We assumed based on talking with his sister that his ideas, because Wilbur has passed, his ideas were to be on the high school. Even though we didn't find anything that really referenced it, we had to count on her to say, yeah, we thought that he was wanting to support high school students as they prepare to go out to their careers. Currently, the district has $3.8 million in the Capital Projects Fund that is dedicated to the Wilbur Rep Tech Center. That $3.8 million is protected from anything else. It has got strings around it so tight that you're not going to let it out to do anything. Okay, that would be the, that would be something that I couldn't let happen and you as a board couldn't let happen as well. But it is $3.8 million, and it has grown with interest there. Not a significant amount, but $3.8 million does generate interest, and it is growing. So my recommendation is that we honor Mr. Rep, and we construct a tech center with classrooms and learning spaces on the campus of high school using the donation funds to complete the project. That's my recommendation as superintendent. It's with Frank and with Stephanie, and if Chris was here, she would be saying the same thing. Chris probably stronger than others because she was involved in the initial donation of the funds, and she's been the communication between Wilbur and Wilbur's sister, correct? Is that right? Okay. So very passionate about that. Next slide. So this is again, this is really draft. Okay, and I'm hoping that, that you realize that there's not, there's been some ideas here, but not anything that would be necessary to actually construct. This is just, again, a concept idea. So this location, if you're familiar with the high school, this right here is where our current greenhouses sit. Okay? The idea is to turn that location into a classroom. Move the greenhouses, as you can see them right here, and build a classroom here, and then all of this area would become lab space or classroom space. This could be vice versa. This is just the first idea that came about. This space right here is what's covered right now with a blue roof. It's an outside area that's used for sometimes classroom projects, work, storage, so forth. So this is this area. This is where you know that it is. It does not go into the new, the property that we have. It stays within the, really what the high school is right now. But it does expand, obviously, with classroom and learning spaces, all covered, all moderated, and so forth. Frank, anything to add to that? Okay? Any questions, board, on this? Okay, Jennifer? So here's your constant cost estimates in regards to this. So this is based on 2026, and that would be as quick that we could get these things going. Because as you saw from the slide before, that slide is obviously lacking in a lot of design and detail. And that's meant to be that way. So in 2026, the cost of that would be $4 million. Okay? And then if we wait, you can see what escalation does.
Kevin, can you talk about the difference between option A and option B?
Yeah. So option B would be, let's see, 5% escalation appropriate. Option B is F, goes up to here with the budget, okay? So the first one is only using the Wilbur Rep funds, which we will believe to be, will be somewhere around $4 million by the time the project would start in '26, okay? With what's currently in there and potentially interest going in there. We believe that that's going to be somewhere there. The option B would be to add to the Wilbur Rep donation with funds from the Capital Project Fund, which would be here, donor plus capital, okay? To give us a bigger budget, to give us a bigger space. What was that? Yeah. B would be a bigger building because you got, yep, yep. That is the only difference between the two of them. Now, I just thought that that would be worthy for you to see if you added to it what it could do. And we just used the figure of 500,000 because it just seemed like an easy figure to, for, for this purpose. But it can buy you square footage, obviously. Go ahead, Derek.
Are we going to get like a one-to-one return on that? So we're increasing it by 12, 13%. Are we going to get a 12 or 13% increase in square footage?
I'm not sure if it exactly goes to 12 or 13%, but it, yeah, you're going to get a pretty close percentage to the amount of money you invest to the amount of square footage you're putting in. Maybe even better. All right, so we understand the difference between A and B there and what we did. We wanted to give you some type of idea if you chose to add dollars to it. And what you're going to see is you're going to have some ability to consider that.
Lauren or Charlie, do you have any questions or comments? Yeah.
Potentially need to take away money, what would be the first thing that would go?
If we were to have to lower this budget? Well, the good thing is we wouldn't have to lower the budget on option A because we already have that money. Okay, that's part of the, of the donation from Mr. Rep. If we went here to option B, you could lower that. But you wouldn't, but you know, and what I'll show you is basically you have, you, the district will have this much money available to do the project.
Are you worried about the greenhouses? Is that what you're looking at, or is there?
I was looking at, so I was at Prosser the other day to cheer, and we're there for a lot of F-based stuff. And for their rebuild, they had to like cut down the size of their shop quite a bit. And it, I was talking to Mr. Watkins, our old shop teacher, when he was still working here, and he was saying that it kind of sacrificed a little bit of safety because it was more close together. It was just less room for students. So I was just curious how the rebuild would affect like shop and wood shop and ag-related things.
It's going to, it's going to add more shop, usable shop space for you in, in a confined area. When you're up there now, you have what I like to call open, that open space. You've got the open space by the wood shop, and then you've got the open space on the other side of the egg shop where the greenhouse is. Yeah, outdoor. That outdoor space now becomes usable indoor space. So where you're doing a lot of projects outside right now in the cold, those potentially could move into that indoor shop space. Yep.
And Colton and Jeff, do you want to, is there anything you want to add about this part?
How about you, Colton?
So, so in that vein, what, what is your vision for the use of the technology center?
I'll explain that a little bit further with Colton mentioned something, Derek. And if I didn't answer your question here, when we, when we task the architect to design this space, we also task them to ensure that anything we build in the short term is going to be part of the long-term, the modernization. So that the, what is constructed connects per se to that other wing of space. So it's not, we were really concerned about building something and then in a short amount of time, having to modernize it or adjust it and then be cussing ourselves because we made a poor decision in design, and we built a building without thinking about the future. And so we tasked the architect to say, we don't, we don't want the building in a certain location if it's not going to fit in to the big plan for the modernization of the high school. So it does. That help with your question? Or is it more about programmatic things that would be going in that space? I want to call your attention to some numbers because these are always important. Is that, these numbers up here represents things that are important when we talk about projects. So this is the construction cost. This is actually what we would go into with a contractor is the, for the cost for them to build the building. This is the soft cost. This includes everything like architectural fees, permitting, tax, all the things that are not part of the construction. And then all projects have a contingency fund. It's a percentage of the total fund, and this is for some unforeseen situations that may take place. All right? You're very fortunate in this district to have had an architect who has built buildings all within these budgeted budgets, okay? So it's always nice to have that as well. With, what's within the cost as well, with some of the soft costs, would be for these because these are not just regular education classrooms. These are classrooms that require specificity depending on the program that's going to be in those classrooms. So these budgets that we've developed are based on the idea that these are CTE-type classrooms, which is going to have larger costs associated with them because of equipment in there, furnishing in there, whatever else may be needed to meet the program requirements that are there. So these budgets have that built into it. So it's not like we build it and then we got to come up with 500,000 for equipment to go in there. No, this is all part of the, that's what's important for an architect to know that we need these to be designed, the cost analysis needs to be done with the idea that these are going to be CTE-type classrooms and potentially lab shop-type classrooms with a lot of extras in there. And so I wanted to make sure that you're aware, because again, these numbers, you think about. And so I wanted to make sure that you're aware, because again, these numbers, you think about, when you see something on a piece of paper, it doesn't look all that big. And then you look at the price tag and it looks really big. But they do, it, these are expensive type of classroom spaces. They're not just walking into a classroom like you would have across the hall in the PD room. Jennifer? All right. So these are timelines and I want to give you some concept of, of what it would take to get this started. And then it would, it would take to eventually get it done if, again, we want to continue down this road. So it starts all the way back here in March, which we are not even there yet. We are obviously over here, okay? In the planning phase. But if there was an interest of moving this forward, you would, this shows you all the things that would need to be done in the coming months, all the way into 2026, where you would not start construction potentially until June of 26. All right, so there's a lot of time here in order to get to here. And why, why is this so much time? Because the, this hasn't even been designed yet. Nothing's been done with it other than what you saw on that piece of paper, other than the thought of what it could look like. A lot of work that needs to be done in order to get to construction. We also know, those of us who have been on building projects before, you don't want to push people. You don't want to force them into a timeframe unless you absolutely have to. You want to give them the time to do the best work as possible to provide you a building with the best drawings as possible. Right Frank? You do not want bad drawings because bad drawings lead to bad buildings. They lead to contractor disagreements. And they eat your contingency because the drawings do not show what is needed. So we want our architect, if we decide to move forward, enough time to, to put time, detail and effort into the drawings. So at the very end of the project, you are very happy with what you get and you still have money left over and it's within budget. You also attract, with good drawings, you attract good contractors. With bad drawings, you sometime attract bad contractors who want to take advantage of situations. So there is means to this in that it does seem like a lot of time, but it has to be that amount of time for a variety of reasons. The world of construction doesn't go very quickly. You are dependent on a lot of other entities to do a lot of work. If you go all the way back down here to what's called a SEPA, Frank, how long does that take? Yeah. So we can't go anywhere. We can't do anything until that's done. And so there's a lot of players involved in this in order to get to an actual construction. Construction here, you can see construction is about, in this specifically, just a little bit over a year. But it's staged in a way that by the start of school in August 27, we have a facility ready for students to use. And that's the whole idea behind it. Okay?
How accurate Kevin are the option A and B? I mean, yeah, we don't say $4 million. We say 4,383,000. It looks like a pretty specific number.
He did that just based on percentages. Just plug some numbers in. Yep, yep, yep. And I have those documents. If you're actually interested in see how he arrived at his, he breaks it down by each of the different categories of types of construction, square footage based on what he's seen, an average across our state from other projects about what it costs for constructions per square footage. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And I have those if you're interested in looking.
Really what our probably, probably says on that slide, but what our thing is now, we decided to move forward with two different designs, an A and a B.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Does this give you enough information? Does this lead you to wanting to further the work? And I'll get to that at the very end because the, there are, there are two different ways to go about this, in my opinion. And we need to make some decisions with regards to it. Neither one of them is fine, but you'll see why we either want to move or we don't. All right, next one Jennifer. All right, so this is another project that for many of you who have been in the community or on the board, have heard this come towards you, to you in a lot of different ways. I will tell you that in my circles of people that I associate, associated with outside of my job, that this is the area that they want addressed. Okay? Now, yes, I associate with some people that have been in the school district for a very, very long time, who remember a football field right over there, all right? Who, where the high school was right here. I'm 60 coming up here, so it's a different group of people. But those people have always thought that this is something that Seela should have. So that's a little kind of preamble to this. With that being said, it also showed up with some very strong support within the facilities committee that came together. Is that they identified this is an area that had been on previous long range plans. And again, it has come up again. So with that being said, NAC has been tasked with developing a plan to upgrade the outdoor athletic facilities at the high school, which includes the field, an addition of the track, a track and stadium seating. The district requested the plan to be developed in phases so that improvements could be made over time and by addressing the most critical of the three needed improvements, which in this case, the field is the first and the priority. So the recommendation is currently the district has approximately 3.7 million in the capital projects fund available for facility improvement. This is 3.7 million in addition to Wilbur rep. This is not Wilbur rep. This is another 3.7. This will be accomplished by replacing the current grass turf with, with a synthetic field turf. Use funds from the capital project fund to complete the project. So the recommendation is to address the field of the three needs. Use the funds in the capital project fund of 3.7 million to do the project. All right, next slide. This is really about as best of drawing or representation that we could get. But this, the purpose of this is to show you that it fits and how it fits. And that you don't have to do a whole lot of changes even when you look at adding a track there. So there would have been some thought before that by adding a track, you would have to make major adjustments to the entire location. And it would have, be, start to have impact potentially on the seating system. You would have to move the field one way or another. It potentially would have impacted on the softball complex. But when the architects went in and started to think about a synthetic turf field and our idea for phase two of adding a track around it, they started to look at the property and then determine that they would have, it would fit there without having to do a significant amount of work, which is good for long time planning. So this is basically just how it would look in there. This is set up as a football field. We know that this facility supports more than just football, soccer, lacrosse and a variety of other things. Go ahead Jennifer. All right, so here's the cost. Again, you saw a drawing that's very low detail and that's meant to be. We did not want our architects spending a tremendous amount of time on a whole lot of work, on detail, if there really isn't an interest in moving forward. But I did feel that you needed some idea of what this costs. Because this project, either independent or part of a track with a track, has been a project that I think over the course of the time of the last, I don't know, 15 to 20 years Frank, has been priced out a couple of times. Okay? So this is not new to have the district go through this process of pricing it out to figure out if it's a doable project. For whatever reason, in the past, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't done. Okay, and it was probably ended specifically after it was presented to the board. It may have ended for a multitude of different reasons. So same type of cost analysis. You see a construction cost, you see a soft cost, you see a contingency fund and you see a budget. The difference between what you see on the top line as option A compared to option B is this is inclusive of the track. I wanted you to be able to see what it cost, not only for the field work, but for the track as well. Because I knew that would probably be a question whether it's from you or from somebody else that, whoa, what's it going to cost for a track? So the cra, the track, that's, it takes us, there's a lot more work associated with putting a track in there compared to putting the field. All right. Again, current costs, 2.4 million dollars compared to a, with a track, 5.2 million dollars. Field, which would be again in 2026, would be the earliest year construction could occur with escalation, it goes to 2.5 or 5.5. And then the same thing that we've done before is to show you how these projects escalate based on a formula that he used for cost escalation over the coming years of construction cost. So as I showed in the previous slide, the budget that you have available to you in the capital projects fund is 3.7 million dollars. You have a price tag here of 2.5 million dollars. Okay, yeah, that eats up a significant amount of that, but you do have the capacity within there. You actually have the capacity in there to have 1.2 million left over. Okay? That is why that we asked you, that we asked the architect to consider a, an additional $500,000 in that other, with his Wilbur rep project. Because all those funds could be used. Okay? Now if Chris was here, Stephanie, she would probably say we would want to leave some money in that project fund at the very end, right? To make her feel comfortable. Yes. And not exhausted all the way down to zero. Right? Okay. Yeah, yeah. All right, any questions?
So the money that is going to be used for this project, where does that come from? Is that just all savings?
In a way, it's called savings, yes. And so it's a result of, of money, multiple different ways that money got put in there. Some years in the past, the, the, the board would say, we want to move money and put it in that savings account for facilities. And so they may have it multiple years, maybe put in 400,000, 200,000 over a multiple time. Money's been deposited into that account. All right? Also, what's in that account are things that are left over from previous building projects. Like the John Campbell project, the transportation project, and maybe even as far back as a middle school project. When those projects were done, they came in under budget. And so money that was left over was put into that capital projects fund. And, and now with you put all that together, it ends up that you have that money available.
Okay.
Okay?
To build off of that, I see that, so it's 3.7 million that we have in the fund. And option B, if we were to start in 2026, is going to run us 5.5 million.
That would be with both the field and the track. So you hit it. If you wanted to do that project, you don't have enough money in the capital projects fund to do that project.
If we, so are we planning on doing this at the same time as the high school?
Good question. This project, as well as the Wilbur rep project, are projects that are, that are much more short term. All right? The high school, complete modernization of the high school is, is estimated to be somewhere with voter approval and board approval, 2033 to 2036. Okay? The Wilbur rep project, the tech center, as well as this, are projects that could be done and be started if we decide to move forward or the board decides to move forward. They could be started in 2026, just next year. All right? If, for example, the track is still not completed, then yes, it would go into the 2020, the 2033 full modernization of the high school.
I was just curious because if the money's coming from leftovers from other projects, if we were to do the other projects first and then potentially have leftover, we could prob, like, I don't know how much money would be left over, but there would be more opportunity to explore option B if there was leftover funds from the other.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we'd have enough to get us there. Right? But those are decisions that could be considered definitely at that time. All right?
Kevin, one option would be a capital levy if we wanted to do the track.
That would be a cap, that one option could be a capital levy. That is an option. Another option is taking out non-voted debt. Is that we take out a loan basically and then agree to some term of paying it back. You're probably going to get a recommendation from Chris and I and Steph to not do that. Because that is just a payment you have to make regardless. And so I would hate to put us in a position where we are unscheduled to make a $200,000 payment each year and then have to reduce staffing or programs in order to cover that cost.
And then Kevin, my next question is, we have in the past put $400,000 a year into the capital project for, you know, the savings accounts Lauren was saying. Do we know what the budget looks like? I can't remember if we can started that up again. I know we'd pulled back on that.
Go ahead Steph, you know exactly that one.
Yeah, and that's something we cut from the budget this last go around. And, and we're developing the budget right now. And so, I mean, those conversations will be had on whether we want to continue or restart putting those funds into the capital projects fund for those reasons, but.
It seems like if we agree to do this, we might want to start putting money back into that as well.
Yep, absolutely.
What about soliciting private funds?
So we have, we have not done that. All right? And, but that is an option to consider. It's my understanding that as this project over the years had been talked about and discussed within the community and maybe to the board or the superintendent at that time, that there was some interest by private donors to add to the, that or become part of that. So that's a possibility, yes. I caution the district and private donors without clarity on what the private donor is going to expect on their donation. Okay? You know, some donors don't want any, anything. I'm, I just want the donation presented to support our students and our community. They don't want anything to do with it. Some donors want naming. Some donors want preferential rights to, of use. So we have to be very clear on what that would look like.
They don't, they don't get to name the football card, right?
Some donors in higher university type of settings get to do that, yes. But I don't, it's my understanding that the donors that had an interest in this project didn't have those aspirations, but we would want to be clear on that. We would not want to set the current board, current administration, current superintendent and future, set them up for a, a, a difficult topic with community members. I'm not opposed to it, just need to have some clarity to it.
Did West Valley Solicitor receive any donations for their field improvements?
I, I don't know that. Okay, what I, what I do know is that there are, there have been athletic based projects in the tri cities area. And when I was at Sunnyside, where you had places like credit unions come and tell you that we would help and support you in your projects, but we want naming rights and we want signage and we want advertising all over the place. And it was almost like the days of the old Pepsi and Coke contracts. Like, okay, we'll help you do X, Y and Z, but we get to put our name all over the place. That's now moved into credit unions. We're not opposed to the idea of having donors if they really have a, have an interest of donating for the good of the, of the project and for the good of the community.
Some of the 3.7 million in capital fund right now, theory is state match fund. So we can't go get a project like this and then ask for state match on state match. Is that why there's no potential of any kind of state match because it's already?
That's one way to look at it. Yes. Yep.
Having been addressed with the stadium itself, the seating, Frank, I mean, what do you think about the bleachers and stuff? That's ever since the flood and first one we had. Really weathered and crumbly and.
Yeah, we've, uh, we've been repairing steps as need be, um, repairing the bleacher seats as need be. But yeah, part of this big picture plan, the looking out to thirty three, thirty six. That would be when the district would probably look at an undertaking to redo that portion of the facility.
I haven't been on the bleachers in a couple of years. Are they hanging in there? Are they?
Yeah, since they did the improvements and the upgrades to the aluminum seat part, they're fine. Yeah, it's, it's mostly the foot treads on the steps themselves that we're having the issue with.
And not to belabor the point, but, uh, or delay the discussion, but what, what's the annual cost of maintaining the field currently versus what it would be if we were to do this facility?
I, it's hard for me to say at this point in time. I mean, you've got, most of your costs is in employee costs, which you're incurring anyway, cause these guys are here forty hours a week. But you do have costs in, in equipment, mowers, uh, maintenance of mowers, purchasing of mowers. Uh, you have a lot of irrigation repair in that area that takes place. Um, but for me to put a overall cost figure yearly on it, I haven't, I haven't dove, dive that deep into it. But we do put much more into that area than we do anywhere else in amendments and time. Uh, amendments being fertilizer and different types of things and, and then time to just try to rehabilitate it. Um, with the amount of foot traffic that field gets, with just competitions, it just wears out. It's, it's just not a good subsurface for grass to grow.
Remember some of those, um, and then the McClary came into effect. So th- this has been on the discussion for ten years. Um, I don't think this is just a school district benefit. I think it's a community benefit. Um, I've said that all along. Right now, um, as a former athletic director and as somebody involved in youth sports, um. A, a lot of our community is driving out to Sozo, uh, to access any, any quality field. Uh, our current field, although our grounds crew and Frank have put an emphasis on trying to treat it and trying every year to do something to it. It, the time that they spend on that, it is not a quality. Sir, it's actually unsafe in some, in some seasons. Uh, just how hard it is and there's a lack of, you, you, you go to a football game by the end of November or soccer game and it's, it's, um. It's dangerous how hard it is and there's no, there's no grass. Um, and so the other thing too is we have to limit our community use. We have community requests to use that stadium because how many other stadiums are there in our community? There aren't. So like lacrosse, we have a growing lacrosse community. We have a growing soccer community. Those, those currently were, were really limited on the ability to be able to allow them access. Whereas when you get a turf field, the, the usage rate and the access, um, explodes. And I will tell you this. Um, I fairly firmly believe with the mental health crisis we have in our community and all the other things happening, we need kids playing sports. We need kids being involved. We need kids, um, um, and, and to have that right here in our community, rather than the inequities it creates to have kids having to go out to. To Sozo or out to Tri-Cities or out to, you know, wherever it is. And we look at the, the surrounding areas and surrounding communities. They're seeing the influx of kids playing sports that, when they, when they've put in turf fields. So, um. This to me is something that's long overdue, this discussion. I'm glad we're having it. Um, but even if it's a phased approach, we're investing in our kids and investing in our community. Um, and I think you'll have, uh, people in our community that rally around this. Um, I, I just think it's a, it's a no-brainer, not just selfishly, not just for the high school kids that will benefit. Because if you look at our sports soccer, football, um, boys and girls soccer, football that could, that could use this, you're looking at two hundred and fifty kids at least. Okay, that, that will have regular access to it. And then you bring in our PE classes that aren't able to currently use our, our field. And then you look at our summer options when the community could use a field, but it's fenced off because they're trying to do some sort of repair to it. Um, this, this is really something that I think needs to be considered at a high level. And I know the price tags a lot, but it's only going up. Because when we first looked at this nine years ago, it was, it was close to a million dollars, right? It was like nine hundred, yeah, you remember. And we had, I had the guy come with a drone fly over, cause we looked at a track. And we were looking at with a track and a, like a six lane track and this, you're, you were, you were looking at, um, under two million for that. So the price tag just continues to go up. So at some point in time, like this is necessary. Um, and it's, it's something that I hope you guys will really consider, um, something obviously I'm deeply passionate about. Um, because of the community and being involved in community sports. Um, so, um, I, I think this, there's a cost savings to this because of. Um, the time and the, the effort that goes into maintaining a, a, a surface that, um. Is, is probably impossible to maintain and it's, uh, given for, a format. So, um, I, I think this is a win for the community if we could get this, um, uh, done as quick as possible.
And Frank, are there ongoing costs with a turf field?
Yes, there's some ongoing costs. There's a couple pieces of equipment you have to purchase to maintain it, to keep the, uh, the, the. What do they call those? I forget what they call them. But the.
Pellet.
Sand. It's a sand type of black stuff. You want to keep that fluffy and, and, and there's some stuff you buy to do that, some equipment you do. Um, and listen to Colton talk though, there's one thing I could tell you. I was involved in a project about twenty years at Kidde Task. And when we did that project, it was an entire high school athletic facilities and everything. And, um, I had the opportunity to sit through design and development on that. And multiple discussions on grass field versus synthetic. Ultimately, we went with grass because the budget wouldn't allow us to do synthetic. But through that process, what I learned as a facilities manager is grass fields are really designed to hold. X amount of competitions a season. A football field, for example. They, they're figuring max co- max time on that field is twelve contests. Well, you add soccer to it and JV to it, your, the amount of contests go up. And as that amount of contests, your wear factor on that field and your compaction factor. Just doubles in the amount of things we have to do to, to get it back. And this cold's right, in the summer, we fence it. We water it twenty-four hours a day and we let it grow to try to get it to thicken. So by the time we get on it in the fall, for the first couple of months, we're not gonna get that compaction and we're not gonna have the worn spots. Um, having been involved in this synthetic turf discussion many times here. Um, as I look at everything I've done in my career, this would be one of the, this would make me smile. This would be, this would be something that I'd feel really good about and really positive about for just the same reason Colton was talking about. This affects this entire community and gives the community something to be tied to, proud of. And yeah, it's phased. Um, if you ask me what I would prefer, I'd like to get it all done at once because I'm that type of guy. But if we can look at phasing this and beginning this now, I just think it's a real benefit.
Baseball's great and basketball's fresh. The community loves. We, we had a potential have a home football game, uh, home playoff football game one time in the last ten years. And the other team refused to come and play us because of time of year and how old the field was and hard the field was. And so we ended up having our only home football playoff game I can remember played at Zeppl Stadium. Corrected. Yep, yep, yep. And then we've had that happen with late girls games and early boys soccer games.
I, I just want to say I'm not opposed to the project. I mean, obviously you go to these other schools, you see beautiful fields. I mean, I want that for Cila. I just, in order to make that decision, I need to know what are we getting into in the future, because this isn't my money.
Uh, unders- understood. Yeah.
We've kind of had some surprises, you know, this what you're alluding to Derek, but like with track at the middle school, seems like that's been a constant. Source of had it remodeled early that I think might have been recall stuff. Hopefully we don't foresee that same stuff in the field, but. I think that it, I, I think we need.
Hey, we have eight minutes left. So Jennifer, I'm gonna get through my slides. So if you could move us forward a little bit here. Timeline again, very similar to what you've seen. Again, we've, I think we need to move. If decided to move, we need to move and not wait to twenty-seven. We can move on these things. So again, you look at coming up in May. What would happen? Again, you have the same things. Geotech, survey, SEPA, all the permitting and application review. Design, design, dejo- design drawings, all that's kind of stuff. It's, uh, board approval all the way here in February twenty-six. Okay? Obviously, board is gonna have, uh, approval here. Okay? Cause we don't get to the formal here, which is accepting of the project without a whole lot of a board of approval back there. But then you have a construction timeframe that's much shorter, uh, which is, which is a positive. So construction would actually start when weather permits us, which would be hopefully sometime about right now, a year from now. Okay, and construction would start and go all the way through July. And be able to be used in August. That's the goal. So it's a tight construction timeframe, but a doable timeframe. But we're talking about, um. You know, now, a, a year from now, going on into construction with this, which would take our field obviously out of availability. But that would be a problem we could solve. But coming back for the beginning of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. You would have a synthetic turf field ready to be able to be played on, uh, by soccer, by football. Potentially lacrosse, great kids and all those different entities that would want to take advantage of it. Okay, so very different type of a timeline. All right? Now, question you're probably thinking is can these two projects be done at the same time? It could. We haven't gone to that thought yet. I didn't want to jump to that. Uh, I'm sure our architect is thinking about that. Could the same contractor do both projects? Possibility? It, it depends on, um, how we want to structure it, if that's something we want to look at. Is there potential cost savings if the same contractor does the work? Yes, there potentially could be cost savings because you have one contractor doing both parts of it. But that's stuff to be determined down the road a little bit. Next slide. All right. I'm, Steph probably doesn't like this, but I'm a guy that likes just simple figures. All right? My whole life has been about simple figures. My wife is an accountant and so she deals with all the detailed figures. I look at simple figures. And these simple figures are actually really close, aren't they, Steph? Okay? Currently is December of twenty-four. We had three, seven point five million dollars in the capital projects fund, fund balance. Right? And you can go back and look up this. It's seven point five with some couple hundred and change there. Okay? Of the seven point five million, three point eight is dedicated to the Wilbur rep, rep donation. Remaining is three point seven, which makes the seven point five. Okay, it's very simple. This is the stuff that's dedicated. This is the stuff that you have freedom to use as you see fit. You've already taken, uh, by resolution, the ability to use these dollars. Especially the dollars that are left over from previous building projects that the bore, that the community supported to use for future projects. To use for safety-related projects and future projects the board determines to be needed for the district. So it's not like you have to go out and get community approval. Not saying you don't, may not want to, to survey them, not, not saying that, but you don't have to. You don't have to ask for another bond issue. We don't have to go to the county and, and get approval. We don't have to do any of that. Basically, you have the funds within the bank account to do projects that were presented to you, other than the one for a hundred and ninety million. All right, next slide. All right, next steps. So it's pretty, I'm, again, I'm being very simplistic here. But determine if the board wants to move forward with the recommendations associated with the Wilbur rep tech center and the stadium field. Okay, that's what needs to be determined. If yes, if you want to move forward. We need to get an architect secured. Okay? Even though we have been working with an architect and even though the architect done work for us. And even though the architect's been the architect in the district for a long time, every project you must go through and put a re- re- request for proposal out there. And architects will determine if they want to present a proposal. And then the board chooses the architect based on their proposal and based on work history, if they want, who they want to be the architect. Okay, so that would have to be done. And then as you can see, you saw the draft schedule of the project with all the other things that go about that. Okay? That's if yes, first step, and then everything else just keeps happening. Also, if no. No further work and or resources will be devoted to the above projects until the board determines otherwise. Wilbur rep funds will stay in the capital projects pun- fund and be protected. Funds for stadium field will stay in the capital projects fund, but can be used for other purposes applicable to the capital projects fund. Right now, I'm being selfish. I'm spending a lot of time on my time, as well as Steph, as well as Frank, as well as Chris and others on these things. All right? We feel like we have a responsibility to do that. If, if there is not an interest in moving forward, then we're gonna, we're gonna reallocate our time to other things. There's plenty of other work that we can do. And it's also, I don't want the current, our current architect, who's been helping us to continue to do work that is, that is not worthy of doing right now. So we want to put, would want to put a stop to it or just maybe a delay to it. I don't know how you want to go about it. But my simplistic thinking here is if yes, there's an interest in moving forward, not guaranteeing we're doing anything, but at least we should start. Taking the steps necessary to meet the timelines that are presented there. And if no, then just let us know and we need to, we need to go about doing other things. But this is not the time though, to take that type of a, of vote per se. This is the time to give you the information to consider for a future vote of moving forward. Questions?
So you don't want us this morning to give you a yes or no?
No. Not anything formally. No. I mean, you can give me an informal, uh, you know, just by yourselves. You're in a study session. You're not, there's no action to be on here. Uh, your action would be Kevin, yeah, I could continue to move forward on this. Uh, but at some point in time, it's gonna have to be more formal, because we're gonna need the formality of the board to start the process of, uh, moving forward. Yeah, in a quicker pace and things that the board really has to be the, the, the say in, not just me as a superintendent.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to speak, uh, and, um, encourage us to make a, a, this formal as soon as possible.
Okay. Mr. Iverson?
Uh, for the Wilbur rep center, I, I think you'd honor him by getting that done as soon as possible. Um, I'd like to get the most bang for the buck. So if it means we have to spend a little bit more upfront. But we can lower the cost per square footage and get larger classrooms, then that's the route that I would encourage us to pursue. On the field, I'd really like to, I'd like to move forward as well, but I want to know what are we getting into into the future?
Okay. All right. If you could think of some questions in regards to that, I can then get, Frank and I can get some answers for you. Okay? Sarah, anything?
Have anything specific to add, other than I fully support both projects, the field. I mean, obviously we can't do, we'd have to be with the building track stage. We have a track that's functional right now, so, um. The tech center is personally for me a, a really high priority. And I know that, that turf field is, I mean, if we had to choose one, I would probably prefer that, that we get that field done first. If we can do both, I, that would be my preference. The turf field and the, the tech center, same time we figure out how to pull that off. We've been putting that field off for far too long. And the, the tech center money is protected. And I worry that we will find something else to. And I worry that we will find something else to do if we do not get that done.
All right, well, uh, then I am going, go.
Sounds like but let's just make sure with like the programs at Wilbur Rep that we end up, however the usage, kinda get a concept of what that final usage is gonna be and then make sure it does honor what his wishes. You know, instead of just being a little windfall that we got some extra space, it sounds like we're close to that, but if we could figure out a way to kinda formalize that thought that here specifically what this building's gonna do and this is why we think it honors his wishes, I think that would be.
Agreed, and, uh, these guys can vouch it up, I've only brought them in. They were part of some initial, uh, analysis led by our architect to get an understanding of the building itself. But, but for the last few months, they've not been involved. Uh, and I, I purposely did that to kinda make sure that we didn't get too far ahead of ourselves. Now, with kind of your, uh, you know, request to move forward, these two can start thinking about the use of that potential space. What should go there? And now they get re-engaged with the architect to really start to, to think about the programmatic, academic needs, uh, of those facilities. As well as then Frank gets involved with the architect and the architect's consultant with regards to field turf to start getting into the more detail. But again, we didn't wanna go there without getting you engaged first. It is a little after our normal time of eight-thirty, is there anything else with regards to the presentation today?
Yep.
All right, Dan, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, I think our only board communication is to wish our, wish our superintendent a happy birthday this weekend, uh, celebrating a milestone birthday this weekend. We don't have an executive session, if I'm correct? If Pete, if Pete Carroll can coach the Raiders, then, then we're doing all right here.
Uh, thank you for that compliment, Jamie, I'll take it that way.
Uh, I, I, I'll move that we adjourn the meeting. Yeah, I'll approve. Yeah, all right, we're adjourned.